Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November twenty eighth. And we have a nice brisk morning this morning, so I guess it is coming and it could be here. So, um, welcome again, and with me today I have Don Twenker, Dan Regal.
Morning.
Myself, Mike Stinas are your county supervisors. Uh, Lisa Smith here from the, uh, she's our county auditor.
Good morning.
Bjorn, um, that is our IT person. Luanne, our executive assistant is in the background. And first on our agenda is, we had a couple of budget work sessions this morning. Uh, we have Marty Hoodlick down for Jackson County Supervisor. Um, is Marty here? No?
Jane Cohen.
Signed this morning.
Uh, so you can call him and see if, or ask him to come to the meeting here that we'll go ahead and move along with, uh, uh, Todd is on vacation, is that correct?
That is correct.
So Jayden Sheckel, our assistant county, Jackson County engineer, good morning, Jayden.
Morning. Uh, so the only thing on our agenda is the retirement of our longtime assistant, Mike Clausing. Uh, he's been here forty-six plus years, I think it's forty-six years, six months and some odd days, but, uh, he was hired back on June twenty-seventh of nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, his retirement is gonna be on effective December thirty-first. Personally, been a tremendous resource to our office. Uh, especially for me, helping me get acclimated to everything with the, how the county works, uh, not only on the construction side, but he's been here so long, he knows about everything that goes on within the county, so, uh, I just personally would like to thank him for all of his years of service and sure I can speak for our department too. It is glad to have him all that time.
No, you know, I, I stopped over last weekend, talked to Mike there when he had a little thing going on, his last day if it was, but, uh, um, you just can't replace that kind of years of, of knowledge and you, you know, every sinkhole, you know, every hole and every corner and whatnot, uh, so that's a lot of years of service and we really appreciate, I can't say that I've ever had anybody say anything bad about Mike. That's, uh, pretty impressive.
So recommending approving his retirement.
The world would appreciate it.
I got a motion on second to approve the retirement of Mike Clausing, uh, of forty-six years, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
I opposed, motion carried, and thank you for all your years of service, if you would please.
Happy retirement.
Yeah, well deserved. Yeah, and happy retirement and enjoy it, and hopefully you get to enjoy it, yeah.
Can we give a quick update on construction projects, obviously with, this time of year, we're slowing down or wrapping things up. Uh, the twenty-first street bridge over by, behind Gino's there in Preston, that one's gonna be opened up tomorrow. Uh, the two-hundred-and-forty-second Avenue Bridge, uh, which is over just west of Andrew, they're gonna, that one should be open by the end of the week on Friday. Uh, then they're pouring the deck on the last bridge, two-hundred-and-twenty-second Street over by the Leisure Lake area, they're gonna pour that deck Friday, so, likely the following week, they should be able to open that up, and that should be it for our bridges.
Lot of improvement this year with seven, six or seven bridges, what have we do?
Uh, seven of the day labor type, cause six within our county and one was shared with Clinton County, and then they also had the Forty-Ninth Street Bridge over by Monmouth there, contract bridge.
Lot of progress, keep it going.
Appreciate it, yeah, we appreciate the effort, uh, you know, your, your department is putting forward too, with either new projects or ideas and.
We appreciate the patience of the citizens of Jackson County.
Yeah, you know.
When you take those bridges out of commission for several weeks.
Especially during harvest time.
Yeah.
Do we know?
Improvement does come with a price, so, price and patience, so we, we do appreciate that, so. That's all right, Jayden, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, did you get hold of Marty?
He said, oh, was it that time already, he said we'd be right here.
Okay, well, so we're down to our visitor or citizen section, uh, is there anyone online or present that would like to approach the board? John, are you on our agenda, or would you like to approach the board, or where are we at?
Board. If I may.
Sure. Mr. John Keys, our county attorney. Morning.
Well, good morning. Uh, the board had asked me to review and updates and leases. And I sent those out last week, and I just wanted to make sure if there's any questions on the internet. Um, I'd sent them also, I think, to Lisa, asked her to help check my math. A cap, we're doing four percent increase for three years, uh, amazing possibilities, two percent, also in three years. Plugged in all the terms, we sent those out, um, and if there's any questions, I can answer those, if there's any changes, it's easier for me to make, and I can send them right back.
The one does need correction, because it says per month. The, the one lease says, it says like twenty-five thousand.
Only five dollar a month.
That could be really nice, but I don't think they're gonna do that.
Oh, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Okay, the, I didn't see that, I saw that, I was referring to the numbers, I'm like, yeah, that's four percent.
No, cause it, it, cause it clearly says twenty-five thousand and whatever.
Yeah, it'd be a year, and then I broke it down per month, okay, I'll look at that, well, that's an easy fix.
I sent the email right after you sent it to me, I haven't looked at it since, but I, I sent that email.
And I saw that, and I looked at it, and I was just looking at the number, I wasn't looking at the language. Well, that's an easy fix, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, and then we'll get them sent out to the required, uh, individuals and we'll
Very good.
Take care of both, Leah. Appreciate stopping in.
Thank you.
Yeah? Yeah, if you would send a, uh, a new, a new and approved, new, just with the terms of
Updated.
Updated terms.
They'll resend it out once.
About ten minutes.
Yeah, we'll look them over and then we'll hang forward. Thank you. All right, Marty's here, Marty?
Morning.
Good morning. So, just an update, we had asked for, uh, um, work schedule types for the transfer of your department.
Yes. I haven't got it done yet, but I talked to Don this morning, till we might have it here by the end of the week. Sorry for the delay.
Okay. Um, so, are we? I mean, with the, with the, I mean, we've had a couple of weeks to proceed with this, but just didn't have time?
Let's go with that, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, anything else we can do? Any questions for Marty as far as moving forward? Um, we?
The brush up at the Andrew Jackson Care Facility, where you dropped the trees, is, is that getting cleaned up?
It will, it hasn't yet, um, I was trying to get, excuse me, I was trying to get ready the doors, the garage door's coming today.
Mm-hmm.
And I was trying, I got the opening on the inside, all the junk cleaned out of there, ready for the door. I, I was doing that, and then it rained and was cold a couple of days, Bob was gone a couple of days. Uh, we will have that taken care of and the door in. Um, I think it'll fit right in there.
Okay.
I got some of the wood cleaned up, but not all of it. I got basically one tree gone and.
With the list that you said you were gonna get to me by Friday, or?
Yeah.
Get it by Friday, could you include what projects need to be finished, like the railing, or, you know, that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
That we, so the new guy kinda has an idea, so you guys can formulate game plans together or whatever?
I will do that, and I will put what I think needs to be done in the future, like the roof and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I expect you'll have time together that you can talk about them things in person and discuss it.
Well, that's what I, I take, cause he, he should be with me for like twenty-one days, the way I figure.
Yeah, I, I mean.
And I'll tell you around, I'll show him how to shut the water off up at the care facility, in case, cause a lot of times Jared ain't around to help do that, and, and stuff like that, I'll show him everything I know how to do when he's with me.
So with that being said, is that water still on in the yard, is that an issue with this ninety degrees we had last night, or?
No.
I talked to Jared bu- last week about turning that off.
What I got, I got the, I was draining, I got a block under the float, and we will get it shut off.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, uh, with, with at least the two, the four weeks, if it will, you got time to, um, walk through things and walk through buildings.
And I will.
And, yeah, we appreciate that.
And I kinda, you know, you stated that, well, just tell them, you know, I understand that, but you, as obviously, it's been a while since you've been new in a position, but you get thrown a lot of things in first few weeks, and try to, to try to remember all that. You know, a year from now, what needs to be winterized, where this goes, where that goes, that's why kinda we're asking for that written thing.
The thing is, this, this is a, a very basic operation, there isn't a lot of lot of stuff like that. It's mainly chain filters and stuff like that, cause every, like, like I said, the pumps downstairs are all that you don't have to do anything to them anymore, because they're all sealed themselves, you know, back in the day, you had to oil them every, you know, couple of months, but nothing like that takes place anymore. And I will have that written down, and I will take him through the buildings and show him, and I will show him what I think needs to be done, and then he can present it to you, and, and then you guys can move forward.
Appreciate it.
Will he be here at five-thirty on the fourth, or when will he show up?
I would guess that's the, the current, uh, the, um, timeframe that we have set. Um, they're gonna work out, of course, what best works for them and/or, uh, other department heads here, if we need someone here later in the evening or afternoon. And we will, so, I guess that's yet to be seen, but we'll have, uh, maybe different arrangements, I don't know that for sure yet.
Okay, and I was going through my phone yesterday, and you called me way back when, wanting to know how long it was gonna take to take the counter out, I never got that message. It, I think it took us just a little over an hour, we had it out.
Looks good, is that something that, uh, you were expecting, or it works good for you over there, or?
It, it was a piece of cake, um, as far as I know, uh, we had to take the one drawer out, the front off the one drawer, because, um, I think it's called the tower. We put that in there and Bjorn thought it might get hot, so we took the one drawer out, and I'm gonna make a, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy some material that's got holes in it, and then paint it to match the door, so it looks finished, to match kinda the rest of it. But I haven't got it done yet.
She had mentioned that, and, and, uh, maybe also think about something like on top of that counter, they went to new personnel and/or, so it can replicate what the recorder's office has, or.
Oh, okay.
Face go.
Well, I don't, we talked to her.
We did, and.
She really didn't want it.
Well, it was hard to.
Talk to her.
Yeah, talk because of the hallway, they're not a doorway, so she's open to the hallway, there's much more background though. But we think if we leave it open on top.
Leave a bigger opening.
I mean, just so somebody can physically crawl under it and go over it.
I know, maybe the same width as what's there, maybe a little narrower, just to kinda.
I was gonna say, we kinda talked about like that, five foot, uh,
Right.
You know, maybe only a foot and a half, or two foot spacing and leaving the top open, so kinda that way your voice can.
Cause I know there was talk they didn't want anything there, but after the counter got swapped out, I renewed some tags, got a new trailer, and they were like, eh, well, maybe.
And I, I think, I think so too, and I think also between the little short hallway where the wall is, I think they need something there, so that them folks on that side, if something goes wrong, they can go through, shut the door and be, cause otherwise, they can just go through this door over to there if they want.
I would appreciate you having that conversation with both them offices, or with, with Beth and say, hey, we need some security or.
Cause you never know nowadays, it's, it's happened all over.
Security, but I mean facial.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's, if you will, a, a bit shielded, but, uh, you know, it's, it's a, a break, if you will.
Okay. Couple things, I don't know what's going on with Benro's building down in the basement, there looks like there's something going, eaten in the wall of the rock wall. Uh, we've never seen nothing there, I've set traps there, never caught nothing, but it looks like something's digging in the wall, the foundation of that building, so I don't know what we wanna do there, pardon me?
Outside.
It's the outside wall of the old building. Uh, back in the day, it had like a little jog in it, and then the roof was over it, and then we put a new wall, and so we had a bigger office. So down in the basement, there's an exposed rock wall, uh, I'm gonna say twenty-five, thirty feet long, and it looks like something's digging in there, but like I said, I put sticky traps down in there and stuff, and I cannot catch nothing, but Bob noticed it, and I did too, and we went over and looked at it, and it like got little tunnels in there, but I don't know what it is. Uh, we haven't caught nothing, and I put like six of them sticky traps down in there, and I haven't caught a bug or nothing down in there.
So I guess if it proceeds, I guess with, with, even, even at the, at the care facility, or I know the groundhog's about about time to take a nap, ain't he, but, uh?
I think I got the groundhog.
Okay.
Cause I plugged the holes in around the cement, and they never come back, but the hole from the outside building to get in keeps coming back, but that could be coon or something else. But the holes under the concrete, I plugged them in there.
On the backside of the water tank building?
Not, not that one, the other building, yeah, I, I just did the one here, and I've never seen him again, and I secondary roads up there a lot, and I touched base with them, and they said they have never seen him again, and he usually's out there all the time on a sunny day.
Okay, well, again, that's something right down, it, it's an issue, so that we don't know, if, if the new guy don't notice it right away, or.
Right.
Spend as much time at the care.
And I'll show him that and tell him to keep an eye on it, and Jared is aware of it, so I told him to kinda keep an eye on it. And then last thing I wanna do is, yesterday, when I was sanding, my sander quit. Um, there's a bearing out of it, there's a little computer that makes it variable speed, and that is bad. So I ordered that, and tomorrow morning at five o'clock, I could go get it and have the parts, so I got it fixed. Can I, can I have permission to go be up there at five o'clock to pick it up?
Where's that?
Uh, no, Manchester. Uh, that way, otherwise it'll take three or four days to get here, and it's supposed to snow again, whatever day. And that way, we'd have time to put it back together, uh, secondary roads mechanics have been helping me to take it apart and put it together.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that, you coordinate with, with Bobby and, uh, and show somebody's around here, and, and they intend to, uh, five o'clock, you have to be here, you have to get out of here at three-thirty or so.
Yeah.
Um, are you intended to take up early then, or is it?
Yeah.
Whatever.
Someday, I'll bank it as, uh,
Contact.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't wanna pay for it, I'll take it in contact.
Appreciate it.
Uh, I think that's it.
All right, thanks, Marty.
Yep, yep.
And, and I'll get, I'll get that to you.
You bet.
No later on Friday, thanks, guys, have a good day.
All right. My agenda back. Next on the list?
Yeah, Kurt.
You just added your head, it's upside down.
There it is.
Yeah.
Too many. So what do we know about Brianna, is, you know, she's on her way?
Over any time, like, ten minutes ago, so.
So, Lisa, would you, would you proceed?
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the minutes of the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three board proceeding, as written, all those in favor, say aye.
All right.
I opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve a handwritten warrant to Iowa Communities Assurance Pool or ICAP for two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars for emergency management insurance renewal. So moved.
Started.
Motion to second to approve a handwritten warrant to Iowa Communities Assurance Pool for emergency management insurance renewal, as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
All right.
I opposed, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board right now, I have my next motion will be for the budget amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, we are joined by Brianna Kurt, our Jackson County veteran, the fair administrator, good morning, Brianna.
Good morning.
Wearing gloves on this morning and.
It is very.
It is chilly out, you know, and I took into individual this morning, it says, well, look at it this way, it's not gonna get much colder than it's all winter.
Yeah?
It's pretty cold, I'm just saying, you don't have a polar vortex or anything like that.
It's minus before.
Yeah, well, you're gonna get it two days in, but all in all, ninety degrees, pretty cold. If we don't get the wind, it's still bearable, you know?
Yeah.
It's not bad walking out when the sun shines and, and wind blowing, but.
Yeah.
Well, good morning and welcome.
Thank you, thank you. All right, just a quick update, um, in October, we filed a total of twenty-two claims, seventeen of those were newer supplemental, DIC or healthcare or burial claims, five were either supporting documentation, requested information, or an intent to file. We had eleven claims that were decided, and that leaves ninety-nine open claims for Jackson County. Um, we have not received any figures from the state for the month of October, so the most recent numbers we have are from September. Uh, there were three-hundred-and-ninety-four Jackson County families that received a total of six-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars in compensation, pension, or DIC benefits. This is an overall increase of five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-eight, which since August of this year. So at the last meeting, you had asked, um, what the change was from the prior year, so I looked up those numbers, and September twenty-twenty-two shows that three-hundred-and-seventy families received five-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. So since September of last year, our numbers have increased by twenty-four families and one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-nine dollars.
Nice numbers.
Yeah. Uh, our home, our work with Homebase Iowa is continuing, we are currently in the process of planning our dedication ceremony for the spring. Um, at the end of October, we sent out our fall newsletter, and we had a very good response and had multiple veterans reach out um, that had never been to our office previously and didn't even know that we were there, so, I would like to encourage any veteran that didn't receive the newsletter to reach out to be put on our mailing list.
That newsletter was very helpful.
Yeah.
And they can reach out to you at the five-six-three-six-five-two-zero-zero-seven-zero number?
Yes. Yeah.
No, I'll make sure, appreciate that, Brianna, and again, uh, them are nice numbers, to think that, uh, that's, that's a lot of um, revenue that's coming to families here in Jackson County, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate your work you're doing there and your, your staff.
Absolutely. All right.
So, anything else we can do for you? Any questions for Brianna?
I'm gonna give you a call later.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. All right, Luanne, are you available? I don't see John here yet, we're a little ahead schedule.
Good morning.
Morning.
Calendar this week. Um, when we get done with this meeting, at ten-thirty, we will recess to have some more budget work sessions. Um, and then we will have a union negotiation strategy session with human resources and the county engineer, and that will be a closed session. Um, also at noon, um, Becky Chape, we reconvene, and Becky Chapin will have discussion possible action on personnel items, and that's also closed session. At six o'clock tonight is Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting. We're done. Tomorrow, Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, at six P M, is the Jackson County Communications Board. Um, that'll be meeting downstairs in the community room, and I think Nin and Don have been going to that maybe. Um, at six-thirty P M, the Jackson County Municipal League will be meeting in Bellevue, Michael will be going to that. Thursday, November thirtieth, from ten in the morning until four in the afternoon, Don will be in the Mississippi Valley Work Force Board Training Session in Burlington. Our next meeting will be, um, on Tuesday, December fifth, that will be an early start at eight-thirty, like we have been doing for the work sessions anyway. Um, and we will finish up hopefully by around nine-thirty, so that you can all get to Dubuque by eleven o'clock for the RPA eight and D-MET um, meeting with Stu Anderson, and I guess that's also available, if I assume. On the, only other business I have, um, for you today, um, is you had asked me to com- compose a letter for Mike Clausing, an appreciation letter for Mike Clausing. So.
I got an email, and I didn't, I thought it was fine. Yeah, um, we discussed the leases earlier with John, so I would get them off to the required participants and for approval, so we can, uh, approve them hopefully next week.
Next week.
Um, ask for a response, so we can approve them next week.
Okay.
You would?
Okay.
And as far as, I just wanna prove that, uh, will you be going to a communication board meeting, either of you?
Yes.
All right, perfect, I have other responsibilities, so, can't make that one, commitments I have. Appreciate it.
All right, that was it.
Thank you. And we just got a little past our visitors and, uh, section, but then, would you like to approach the board yet?
I just need to signature from you and talk to Lisa, if you guys have any requests.
Okay, you, do you wanna do it during the meeting, or do you?
No, I just.
Okay. All right, so we're back to our agenda, um, I guess at this time, we will recess. Again, good morning, and we will reconvene our meeting at this time, and we're joined by, uh, Jeremy Oden, um, Midwest Construction Consultants. Good morning, Jeremy.
Good morning, everyone.
Jeremy, we're looking for updates for the law center and extension building. Uh, I hope you got heat.
Got heat down the fairgrounds, I still don't have any heat in the jail, I'm running some, uh, hundred-pound cylinders and some, uh, torpedo heaters, I've got masons out there yesterday and today, so, I'm still dealing with Black Hills, um, Doug Schnorr is gonna get the wire pulled to the units tomorrow, they don't wanna get on the roof today. So, um, should have heat by the end of the week, given if I couldn't get with Black Hills. Um, Eric Olson was instrumental in helping me down at the fairgrounds, I had a heck of a time. Uh, Amber Matisson and I were on the phone with the lady for over an hour, uh, we thought we had it all straightened out and everything, and then when the work order came out, they had the meter numbers backwards, they had the addresses backwards, they argued with me that you can't have two entities at the same address and all this and that, so Eric helped me sort all that out, so, um, I've been trying to call him yesterday and today to have him help me sort out with the jail and everything too, but I haven't been.
So originally, three, four months ago, we went through this, and we made a call to Dubuque, and I gave you a number, and that was.
Yep.
Almost still in process.
Yep, yep, and then when it comes down to the point of getting it turned on, you gotta go through the eight-hundred number, which sent me to some call center.
Sure.
Clicker out in Ohio and, and.
Well, this guy on Dubuque told me to call right up there at that time, so, I remember, hopefully you still got that number.
I don't know if I do or not, Mike, if you, could you, do you still have it?
Boy, that's been a while ago, I'll have to go back in my messages, maybe I sent to you and.
I can look through my phone.
I don't know if I erased anything.
Yeah, you probably texted it to me or something, but at any rate, we'll get that taken care of, we'll get that handled, so.
We tried.
Yeah, oh, have we been.
Well, cause it was, it's, that's exactly what happened, I was talking to somebody in Texas, and they finally got a number for a lady in Dubuque, cause she could just call here, and we got a confirmation number or something.
Yeah, that's when we clicked, that's when we actually put in the, the application for service.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll go back through my records and see if I've got that number, I kinda forgot about that, to be honest with you, so.
Yeah, no, she was, I mean, she was helpful.
Yeah, that's what I need, that's what I need, so, but, uh, like I said, got masons out there working, they were there yesterday and today. Um, they're gonna try and just pepper in when, during bad weather and, and get here and do what they can, they're awful busy. John's been after Bruce Builders about getting a schedule from them, and it's been difficult to get, uh, a solid commitment out of the masons, but they're, they're working on that detox today in those holding cells, so, um, Bruce Builders guys are there setting door frames on the mezzanine, so they're getting all that laid out, so that strip any excuses away from the masons about, you know, not being ready for them, things like that, so, um, they get the holding cells done, and I can get the security ceilings in and, and everything like that, so, keep moving forward, and, uh, I got guys, I mean, same old thing, running conduit, pulling wire, plumbing, MEPs, you know, HVAC guys, Bjorn's got a couple of guys out there pulling data wire in the admin, so, they worked late last night, so, yeah, they're doing well, so, um, we got painters probably coming in toward the end of the week to paint the administration. And, uh,
Probably need heat.
Really? Probably need heat.
I've been heating it with that hundred-pound cylinder and that, that propane heater, it keeps it sixty degrees in there.
Okay, so. Okay, so.
Even if, even if we get the, the units fired up, we won't be able to heat that administration until almost completion of the job, because that's those V F R units. And those guys will not fire those up. I've been through this a million times. Um, if there's any dust, i- it's gotta be a complete dust-free environment to fire those. They're very finicky. And so we will be temp heating that for the foreseeable future. It's not a big deal. That, a candle would heat that administration. It is insulated so well. It's like. I shut the heat off entirely for days and it just stayed sixty degrees in there with no heat at all, you know, so.
Well, this is the worst of the coast, probably, hope, but. We need ventilation and whatnot, you know, for, so if you're running. They'll be in there.
Yeah, it, it gets, it gets enough from the guys coming in. Doors and everything. Haven't anybody fall out yet, so. Um, they got the solar uh, mostly completed, it looks like, and everything. They were putting panels on. Yesterday and they're out there.
Underground boring over to the.
They did, yeah. To the best of my knowledge, they didn't hit anything, so. They went, well, they went, and I know they didn't, cause they went eleven feet deep. Cause I, I told them everything that was in there. Me and Doug were, you know. meticulously telling them where everything's at, you know, and you better get deep, and so they took our advice and they went really deep there. It was lucky because the rock that they incurred in the waterway. Kinda fades off right there, so they were able to dive down and get under everything, so, yeah. So that, we walked away from that unscathed, so. But uh.
Normal stuff?
Just normal stuff.
All right, take care of it.
So, yep, um, down to fairgrounds, uh, we're looking at getting paint in there by the end of uh, the week, so. I got guys down there working on ceiling grid right now, and they're finishing that up. Uh, electricians, there's. Five of them down there, so. They're doing well, so. Nice and warm down there, sixty-eight degrees in there, so.
You can spoil them.
Yeah, so, that's about all I know unless you guys get any questions or anything like that, so.
Appreciate it. Anything you need from us?
I can't.
I guess you know where we're at, yeah.
How do you foresee like the extension one? Completion, fine.
I don't think it's gonna be a hundred percent completed by Christmas, which was our goal, and I, I conveyed that to the owner, you know. The board and everything. We wanna get as far as we can, obviously. Um, I, I don't think the cabinets will be in, and I don't think all the floor coverings will be completed, but it'll be, it'll be painted. It'll be clean. And, you know, I told them if they wanted to have a little Christmas party in there is what kinda they wanted to do. I said that wouldn't be a problem, you know, and they're understanding, you know, that. Um, we haven't really had any major issues down there at all. Uh, got delayed a little bit on the sheet rock finish and everything like that, you know, probably cost us another week or two that was unforeseen, you know.
So they were looking at a December opening, just so they don't have something booked in there. You're touching base.
Yeah, 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 I've been going to meetings and everything and that, so they, they don't, they don't have anything booked in there until like February, so. Um, yeah, it'll be. It, it'd be right after the holidays, pretty sure.
Flooring and stuff like that, start going to the administration building and the jail. If there's dirt and painting and all that.
Well, uh. There's some, some stuff above ceilings that need to get done too. I've got some plumbers need to run some condensate drains for those V F R units and that. And uh, they're looking at doing that here real, real soon. Um, I, I would say. You could start seeing some floor coverings. Hopefully by the end of December, or. Things get tricky around the holidays, Don, you know, it could be after the first or something like that, but I would, I would say no later than the first part of January. You know, realistically, so. Yep, that'd be good to see some of that going down, so. Thank you.
Okay, yep. All right, Jeremy. Yeah, anything, let us know, you know, where to find us.
Sounds good, Mike.
Okay, um. I guess, is there any uh, boards or commissions as far as it went to prosperity Eastern Iowa, I said that was about three hours ago. Uh, had some good programs, uh, Homes for Iowa program. Really interesting. They've sold like uh, the last four years, a hundred and twenty-five homes that are constructed. On a site by Newton. Um, individuals are out there building and, and learning and uh, getting into the workforce and building these homes and uh. A place to put them, and I got certain. Three or four different designs that they use. It was a pretty interesting program that was given out by Stephanie from Homes for Iowa, if you wanna look at, look that up, but. Um, had a grant loop update, of course, um. Ground fields, underutilized properties, uh, their programs and grants that are going out, so. Again, I just thought to myself, we keep the hospital property in back of our mind, this case, I don't know what's going on with that, I guess, so. But it was, it was an interesting meeting, so it was.
E C I yesterday for the early childhood. Um, apparently they had a snafu in their fundings. Where the lady that was taking over fundings didn't realize she had to do uh, from the state level. A budget request, so they haven't had money coming in to pay their bills for the last. Two months and don't proceed until basically kind of the end of December. Sometime, because now that she knows how to do it, it's still like a. However, long process for them to get funding, so they're basically. Waiting on the fund, all the bills are submitted, waiting on the funding to come in before they can go out and be paid. Um, they did do. I think right now they're sitting on twenty-six. Yeah, twenty-six preschool scholarships that they're funding in Clinton and Jackson County there, so that's really good, um. They also, uh, our new director for there is going to a conference. Or a meeting in December fourteenth. And she's looking for anybody who wants to donate stuff for the homeless shelter that is kind of run out of Clinton County, so. If um, people are wanting to donate to that, she's willing to take that, um. You can get in contact with her through the Sacred Heart School and make donations there. Um, Board of Health, just kind of the routine programs going on. They had an update from all of their own society. Agencies, things are flowing along. Well, they're. We're, we're working on, apparently there's some cabins on some islands. Sebula that got flooded out and they're wanting to rebuild and. And that the whole issue is like toiletry and. Cause you can't get to them by, by boat.
Well, we talked about that when we met with Kramer that day. Um, he had pointed them out, uh, where they were. It was amazing. That they were private, almost like almost in the middle of the river, almost. So there's sanitation issues probably.
So, yeah, so they're, we're kinda going through. They have these. Dry flush toilets, like form or whatever. I call them miniature. To me, they remind me of a diaper genie.
I guess it's.
Feels often, they'll have to take their waste with them when they. They leave and, but just trying to get some of the logistics there worked out on so that these people can go ahead and rebuild and. You know, and how do you handle the off-the-grid? Things like that, so.
Well, there's a lot more regulations than there was back fifty years ago, so. Apply, comply to them is, hopefully they can work something out.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we're making, we've made big strides there and she's ready to move forward, so. That's been the big thing. Conservation is still looking for funding for their new, um. Exhibit going in out at Hurstville Interpretative Center. If you haven't seen that, that's a really cool. Kinda you start off, you walk through a cave, and then you go into a woodland area, and it's gonna be a really cool project that they got. Coming in, but they're still looking for funding, but they've also raised. A lot of funding already, so.
Okay, anything done that you wanna add?
I had last, last week was the uh, Mississippi Valley Work Force. They didn't initiate a resumling, so.
Technology is wonderful when it works. We're not quite ten o'clock yet, so I appreciate that, and. I guess at this time we'll take a short recess again. Okay, welcome back, and uh, it is ten o'clock. I have ten o'clock. We have a public hearing scheduled on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Budget amendment, so we will open the public hearing at this time. Has anyone received any responses or comments to the public hearing? Uh, would you like to explain it a little bit?
Sure. Um, this is the first, probably not the last budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-five or twenty-four. Um, the list of amendments that we're doing are. We're adjusting the drug grant, um. Fund expenses to take into account what was left in fiscal year twenty-three so that we can spend it in twenty-four. And spend that down to zero. Um. We're adjusting uh, Laura Rowling's zoning budget to account for the comprehensive plan expenses. Uh, we're adjusting tw- that for twenty-five thousand. Um, we are amending for the revolving loan to, um. Allow for three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars in additional loans. That would include the. The, uh, Together We Build Loan. Um, we're moving from Fund One to Fund Two, the F A C and I F R S. For the I T department. And we're adjusting for the swap funding for fiscal year twenty-three outstanding bills. That they have not submitted yet. So that we can pay them if they submit them in fiscal year twenty-three. And that's it, for four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars.
I haven't received any calls or comments. Is there anyone uh, participating by Zoom that would like to comment? Very none?
Well, it's a closed public hearing.
Have motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
So with that, I need a motion to approve resolution number nine 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 dash eleven dash twenty-eight at twenty twenty-three. For the amendment to the county budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And authorize chair and auditor signatures on the record of hearing and certified to the state of Iowa. As recorded.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve resolution nine 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 dash one one dash two eight. Dash twenty twenty-three as presented. All those in favor say aye. Uh, aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you very much.
All right. Lynn, are you waiting for Jack? Well, he was here. He said, I'll see you at ten. So would you like to start or would you wanna wait for Jack?
Up to you guys.
We can wait for Jack, huh? I'll take a short recess.
Couldn't get away.
No, you're good. And we're back, so. Um, we have a, next on our agenda is Jack Lilly and Lynn Vogts, our Jackson County uh, Disability Coordinator, Service Coordinator.
Good morning.
Good morning, again. So we're looking for an update, I guess, you're scheduled.
Yep, for the uh, November Government Board Meeting for the Eastern Iowa Mental Health and Disability Services Region, Jack and I attended, and. Then this time you were able to get logged in, right?
I got in there.
Success, that's great. And it was a short meeting, as you know. Nice as well. So, yeah, the report is fairly short today. Um, the current fund balance. And it's pretty early in the fiscal year to rely on this, but it is at thirty-nine percent, and keeping in mind that. At the present time, the target is to be at five percent as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Now, whether or not there will be any discussion in the upcoming legislative session regarding that percentage, I don't know. I would say. Real possible there could be discussion. I don't know if there will be any changes.
True.
Um.
Well, there's discussion every year on it, so.
There has been, and it's never changed yet, so.
Well, we did go, did we go from five to ten at one time? Two years ago?
Well, the original language in code had to go from forty percent down to twenty percent.
Okay.
And then that's where it stayed, and then the, the next increment in that code language is five, five percent. Yeah. But there was conversation about it going up to ten or whatever. So stay tuned, I guess. Um, in terms of fund balance for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so as of June thirtieth. Lori had to submit, the C E O had to submit the report to the state. It was due by December first. Of the unaudited financial figures, and that fund balance landed at thirty-one percent. So keeping in mind that was supposed to be at twenty percent. Um, which means that the first, the third quarterly payment of this fiscal year. Which would arrive before January will likely be reduced. If there will even be any payment remaining to be made by the state. That's how the state recoups. They don't really recoup that money. They just don't send us money because they want us to spend that overage amount, right?
Well, we've said this how many times, Jack? I mean, we've been through this, this, not just the reason to go out and spend money. They gotta. Have programs that are sustainable and. Whatever it may be, so it's.
And it still goes back to some of the programs we approved. Haven't started.
Would never, yeah, right. Yeah.
And staffing and.
Right, yep.
Appropriate personnel to manage the programs.
Yeah. Um, Jack did sign as, as the boards designate to the governing board on behalf of Jackson County, the. Service contract for reimbursement. That was proposed, which is just the agreement between the region and all five counties. As far as the expenses that each county submits on a monthly basis to be reimbursed. Back to Jackson County, so for example, that's the salary of anybody in. In a role that is directly related to the mental health region, so my salary, a, a small portion of the. Um, front office person over at the Penrose Annex, and then ancillary expenses like copies and telephone, my mileage. Those kinds of things. No, no, it's fine. No, no, thanks. Um, so this is an agreement that. Was signed by all five counties on Monday. Um, and it's renewable, it's reviewable, but it's also just automatically renewable every year. I don't know, Jack, if there's anything you wanna add about.
No, I think that, you know, that's, that's what we did.
Um, they won't change anything. At this point, there is some discussions to whether or not. The counties could, should, will, um, request reimbursement for space. I think first that probably has to be a conversation at the region level. Because it would be the type of expense that the state would expect. If anybody submits that expense, all counties should do that. There should be consistency with that.
And we discussed that way back.
Right, right.
Whether that would be an allowable expense.
Yeah.
And you have to have a space.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I think it should be a allowable expense, but it hasn't been decided yet for sure how that's gonna be handled.
Yeah. Uh, and I guess the last thing that I have is, uh, the only, the other action that the board took was they did. Approve some additional, this is one-time funding for the remainder of the fiscal year to what we call Challenge to Change. Which is the social and emotional learning. Yoga is a part of that, that is it within, available to all the school districts and all the school buildings within the five counties of the region. Um, there was some data that was provided in it. As a part of that request for this additional funding, just to let people know about the usage of it, and I would say Jackson County. For the size of our county in comparison to the other counties and certainly utilizing that at a rate that we're. We appreciate, so.
I was thrilled.
Yeah.
When I saw what was being done in Jackson County. Because, you know, some of the larger counties, the percentage was much. Much less than ours, you know, so they. You know, so they are getting some service.
Yeah, so last school year, for example, um McCoke to Eastern Valley and Bellevue School Districts all participated in. And they they trained a hundred and forty five staff, varying levels of staffing. Twenty nine of them were from Jackson County, so that was about twenty percent of the people that were trained for last school year were from our county. Um now for this current school year. There are six schools in Jackson County, six buildings in Jackson County that are utilizing the online services of it. And um. Forty eight schools have signed up for some more online availability. So we continue to utilize it in our county, which is. Really encouraging to hear. And again, it's one of those programs that people might question. Really what it's all about or the kids really gaining anything from it, but not so much, I wouldn't say at the November board meeting, but at previous meetings, there have been. Always examples of. How kids have taken some of this information home. And used it either at home and their parents ask them what it's all about and then they talk about. How to handle their emotions and handle them appropriately and not get angry, but rather um either talk about it or. Do what things they've learned to do to calm themselves. So. I I think we're seeing.
And they estimated that twenty seven thousand four hundred and forty students K through twelve are utilizing this.
That's in. Not in Jackson County.
Yeah, and they also did some training to um the staff at Andrew Jackson Care. Imagine the possibilities. They went and did some training there as well. So. So that's really all I have. I. I don't know what else was happening. It was a short meeting.
Shortest meeting we've ever had.
Yeah, for this group, it was nice. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, and um still no report back from the state. If you remember, we've talked about that certainly last month and maybe even the month before, we're anxiously anticipating. The report from Health and Human Services as far as how they plan to restructure. But that report is not available yet.
It was supposed to be out in October. We're. Almost to December and it's still not out.
Yeah, so.
I don't know if on the eighteenth of December when we have our Health and Human Services Council meeting. If. If they will introduce it to us at that meeting, I don't know, but we haven't. I haven't had any emails from Health and Human Services about. What the progress is.
Yeah.
When they told us it would be out in October, I kept waiting and waiting and waiting. And then waiting in November and probably waiting in December.
So yeah, that's all I have. You have any questions? Anything else you can think of? Okay.
Appreciate the work you're doing and.
We'll be back.
Thank God willing, huh?
Yeah.
Have a good day.
You too. Have a good holiday.
Yeah, well, we'll see. Are you uh? Are you around today, Jack? You got meetings later or what do you got going on?
Um. No.
I might give you a call later, just in a week. Have a cup of coffee or something.
Okay. I will be at home, undecoring a fall tree, getting ready for.
Alright. Alright, so I would guess at this time is I'm gonna jump back to visitors visitors this one time. Um to see, I see Lisa, you're on. Would you like to approach the board this morning? Ah you'll work for the work session, okay. Well, at this time then we will take a recess for work sessions. Alright, thank you for the, I apologize for the delay, but we're back in session. And we reconvene at this time. Um Becky, the human resources had joined us. Becky?
Good morning.
Morning.
Um so it actually turns out that I will not be needing the opportunity to discuss personality at this time.
Okay, is there any other issues in front or before the board today?
With that being said, I guess I am moved to adjourn our meeting.
A second.
Have a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.